It's six o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome everyone. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the city's YouTube channel. We will go with a roll call and please state your name.
Mary Ann Williams.
Dan Wosner.
Tom Nury.
O'Daly. And Volk are absent. Next, I need approval of the consent agenda. Someone?
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number five, discussion of possible motion concerning Iowa Land and Buildings, proposed QTS construction lay down area. Or how this is going to work is first we'll start up with some discussion. Possibly some introductions of people who haven't been here before. And then we'll see if the council's ready to make any decisions on anything. So Scott standing, you want to introduce some people that haven't been here previously?
Yeah. Honorable Mayor, Council. I'm here just tonight to introduce the QTS, Lake White's team members that you have not yet met. Those I'd like to introduce and start off with the Darren F. And then Leighton Anderson. I'm sorry.
Exactly, it's QTS.
Yeah, Matt Brand, I was here pretty easily.
Mike Bush, Bruce White, Construction is also here.
Emily Pfizer with the Lions Energy.
Chris Krass with Wayne Weinstein.
And so on that note, I believe
I've heard you a long while. Dustin Burnwell, I-Lab, Alliance Energy. I missed the last meeting, sorry.
Thanks, Dustin, I'm sorry.
Also joining us is Calton Homer Nickel. But I have more than a thought, which is a good thing.
Yeah, there you go. On that note.
You can miss an hour or a minute.
So, thank you, everyone, Mayor, Council, Ken Jeffery, the QTS. I run Economic Development for QTS. Like, thank you for the time tonight and look forward to the discussion about utilization of some property for us to utilize for construction of our data center project in the east. And Wayne Anderson is in charge of our construction team globally. And so I think he can talk to you about us as a company and what we do in terms of what to expect from the construction and hopefully we can get to the approval here tonight. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Yeah. Hey, thanks for having us in the form here talking about stuff. So, we were a national developer of data centers, right? We build a lot all across the US. I think the thing that we're obviously not in your city where we're building new properties. Obviously, we're adjoining your property. But I think I hope you guys recognize, or maybe we can help explain it, is how it could impact you guys in terms of what we're building, right? Because there's going to be a ton of people who are living, working, and employed on this project for years to come. So, there'll be, you know, hundreds and ultimately thousands of people who will come to work on this property. And the way we do stuff across the country is really, I think, we think differently. We care about employee safety, we care about their well-being, we care about we become part of your community, right? So as an adjoining part of the community, it really matters no different to us. If we're in one city or the dot, I know it probably matters to you guys, but for us, certainly people living, working for this facility that are in a big circle around this facility. So there'll be hundreds, again, thousands of people go to your restaurants, your cafe, your businesses that are going to be physically employed on that site. And we'd like to do the best thing for them. And the best thing for us would be a property that joins our property that we could build a construction lay down area, which will be utilized for a number of years. And what we like to do is a really first-class development where we put in nice construction trailers, which resemble almost, you know, a temporary outing that you see like at school where people put up nice facilities. Put in nice parking where people can park their cars safely and not trip and fall. Put in nice lighting fences, things that would resemble, while they're temporary, they look very professional. And that's what we'd like to build. So those are things we think approves. Frankly, for us, it always comes down to the people, right? The people who are working there, the craft workers, the men and women. We take it pretty personal. Our safety record is one of the best in the industry. And it really starts with the moment they park and get out of their vehicle, how they're treated. And again, there'll be people that you probably will know in some form or fashion. So the best safe to swap would be the property that joins our facility. We have a number of other locations that are rolled directly around it, which we can build. And if we're not successful deciding tonight, we'll do one of those. But the best one for the people will be right there. But what we're trying to get an answer on, and I think we've had a few turns, that maybe we just didn't explain ourselves, well, what we'd like to do, to get approval to build at our cost and expense that facility, and if there's some road improvements we need to do for that, we're grateful to do that. It is, again, benefits hopefully your city, but also it benefits people to be safe on roads and include weather conditions that always occur. So that's what we're trying to be today. What y'all need from us to help answer the question of how to get people safely in and out of the site and ultimately be a great partner for City of Fairfax for years to come. This will be a great facility, and I'm sure if you've looked at the way those developments work in other places, one thing seems to be got to know. More than likely, there'll probably be one built in City of Fairfax soon enough. But that's just my speculation, because that's just the way things work across the country. That has no, nothing to do with what, do I know there is one or isn't. So, anyway, we love to get a direction. If there's any questions we can answer about what we're going to build or what you need from us. It is imperative of us to get an answer, though, if there's something you guys need to know. Because we do have people that are coming in to do projects and we just have to make a decision, so. On your floor, answer questions.
Council, you have in your packet a copy of the latest form of the proposed development agreement. You also have in your packet our attorney's opinion on signatories on such agreement. So I'll open your the floor for any questions or discussion at this point on anything within that agreement or anything that they can respond to.
Wayne, I had a quick question on what you referenced. Maybe I misunderstood you correctly. Housing, similar to housing, there's nobody living on site.
It's a bad reference. It looks like it's their temporary office, nobody lives on site. It's got, there's no dwelling, there's no beds, there's water piped into these things, there is stories, facilities for toilet water that gets trucked off-site, that gets pumped out. But no, nobody lives there.
What's the hours of operation? Is it business hour or is it?
Yeah. Business hour, but I mean, admittedly, construction could go six and seven days a week at times, right? If it rained on a Wednesday, we'd be trying to make it up on a Saturday or Sunday. So I wouldn't say there would never be work on any weekend, but that would be happening either way, right?
Because you're obviously a distance away from any residential.
Correct.
But as far as late at night, early in the, early in the morning?
Yeah, I mean, it's, knowing the way we build across the country, there'll be times for the end where we'll start really early in the morning and maybe go later than like a concrete board. Typically, it starts very early to get the concrete trucks off the road before people get in their way, for lack of a better term. So those boards would happen early, and then you might have a specialty crew of somebody working at night just to be out of each other's way. Most things are always driven off safety. How do we put large equipment or people away from things where they wouldn't be? So there wouldn't be incidents early or late, but it's not all of that. The normal would be what I call a first shift operation, standard shift of people to go to work. So typically, that construction workers like to get to work early, and then I like to get off before peak crowds. Obviously, peak traffic here is a little different, which is good. But that's the way people use their work.
So if you have somebody that does work overnight shifts and it's noisy? I mean, is that a thing?
Well, I would say our typical piece of equipment would resemble a big case full drive tractor. It'd be about the same amount of noise, so it'd be about the same distance from a road. It looks like it's about the same horsepower, it's about the same sort of off-road vehicle. Most of the work is after the first moving stuff is done, inside a facility, you couldn't see or hear them anywhere. They're inside a facility with basically no noise. And that's all inside of the property itself. If you were at the property line or outside of it, it would probably be, you know, very quiet. Typically, road noise of a car going down the road is louder than the construction noise being created.
So similar to farm tractor?
Yeah.
So the lights, will the lights be on 24/7? Like at night over there, are they on all night? Because you can see them from the highway here.
Yeah. It most likely is. Most likely, they like to be on inside of our construction site, just for security, keeping people, you know, getting safe, but also just making sure that, you know, an instance doesn't happen. We have security cameras, so without lights, it's hard to see some of the things happening. But typically, they're directed toward, they're on the edges, they're pointed in, they're not pointed out. So that would be all. But again, that's all things that are on our, on our construction property itself. The thing that a construction parking lot is really just enough pass lighting people can get out of their vehicle and walk safely down. It'd be no rudder than probably this apartment complex around the parking area.
I'm assuming SUDAS would kind of regulate a lot of that as well, too, as far as light pollution.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and those are all, I mean, honestly, that stuff that we would, you know, if there's a certain lumen level that you need to have, I'm sure we can work around any of that.
You mentioned security cameras. Fairfax, we utilize the Lynn County Sheriff's Department for our law enforcement. Do you anticipate, in addition to security cameras on the lay down area, would you have any overnight private security guards or anything of that nature?
We would, so honestly, it can be whichever one. We employ lots of private services just because we can see they have a lot of peaks and valleys of capacity for many people we need. It's not uncommon for us to seek first. If your police force would like to arm up some other services to employ them, we don't require it. But we typically ask them first, hey, you know, you, moonlighting, whatever, do you need that additional services or you want to offer it? We're happy to utilize them. But we don't force you to, right? We would have our own national services, and I can give you more detail on that, probably out of my strongest skill about what.
Yeah, so I think what she's trying to do, like, do you have a guard shack? Do you have, like, you know, some people are restricted to go in and out, that kind of thing?
Right. Yeah, we control on our construction site, we'll control who gets in and out. We won't let just random people in. It's very, it's a very regimented, bad process with, with them true authentication on our parking, et cetera. It probably depends a second or two what level of security. But is there, is there a concern you have there about that security or is it just more?
Wayne, you can touch on this a little bit deeper here. So we currently utilize Cedar Rapids, ED. That site to maintain traffic, to make sure that everyone's, the public's safe. Our teams coming on and off the site are safe.
Yeah.
Incorporated with SiteMetro, except we have them on site for security to make sure that we are monitoring who's coming on and off that.
Correct.
So to use those facility, yeah, I mean.
But in the lay down area itself, that wouldn't be Cedar Rapids that would be able to help.
Right. It would be protect, we would still have security monitoring that, and if we needed a Lynn County sheriff or anything like that, we would, we would definitely be, utilize those services as well.
We have a very low crime rate in Fairfax, but this time of year when a lot of building is going on, construction trailers seem to be what people are looking at.
Yeah, we have a tendency to secure our stuff, I would say, better than most because our, you know, copper wire, metal equipment does have a lot of value to it. We don't store a lot of that stuff on site very long. We typically, we have remote warehouses that are in the area. We'll bring it there, it may only sit there for like a day till we actually try to get it inside of a building. But we've been doing this for a little while. We, in fact, I can't tell you the last time we had anything actually stolen because of our protocol about even SiteMetro, SiteMetro is a you have a true badge, if not just a visitor, it's got an RFID tag that says you are authenticated. I don't know if your schools have that, but something where you're a true, almost like the real ID versions of those. So it's a, it's a very well-controlled. There's no random people walking around, I guess, for a longer. And again, maybe just in terms of cleanliness, the way it looks and feels, if you've driven around, and I'm sure you, everybody has driven around, it strikes the side, you go, that looks like a disaster, whatever's happening over there, just mud and dirt and trash and garbage and things pile up. That's not, it's not, it's not a site to look there. We try to pave and fully bridle things where, when you pull into it, even though it's a temporary facility, it was under an ask for a permanent facility in most areas, just because that's the way we build it, in terms of cleanliness. There's no garbage laying around, there's no just things blowing up on the fence, wondering what is all this stuff? I mean, it will probably look very permanent to you in terms of the cleanliness, the upkeep, the way we handle it. Just the way our company is QTS first word, and that is quality. So everything we touch is quality. If you look at anything we do, it's very, we build 100-year facility, meaning they last for 100 years. So everything we do is built that way. So that means the people, training, we take people through the quality that we put into everything they touch, from the minute it shows up on the site to logistics, people, roads, lights. Again, how we frankly just benefit the local community with training, right? How people are trained to be safe, how people are trained to take care of their health and well-being, and frankly, just skills. So that's a lot of things to do, but probably off topic for what we're talking about, so I apologize.
I'd like to say something, not fair. Thank you for the phone call.
Do you come up to the microphone that we're, since we've are taping this?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity. My name's Darren Napoli. And Leighton did a great job talking about QTS as developer and owner. But I want you to hear maybe from me personally. I grew up in Cedar Rapids. This area is my hometown. My role at Leighton is I'm Senior Vice President in charge of this project with partnership with QTS and Whites. So this means something to me, how, what kind of community partners we are. I graduated from Cedar Rapids Kennedy, I went to University of Northern Iowa. I ran a company down here with a previous life down in Iowa City. This is my home. What Leighton was describing on, how do we look from the curb, matters to me. It matters to me personally. Chris Krass, this with Whites lives in Hiawatha. You have people in executive positions that are currently live or from this area. So I'm trying to say that it really matters to us how we come across. Obviously, from a professional standpoint, it matters to us how we deliver QTS on client. But from a community standpoint, it matters to me because this is where I'm from. And I want to be proud of what I build in my hometown. And I was here in 2008 when the floods happened. I personally was sanding. I was responsible for rigging the US Bank Tower back online. First building in downtown Minneapolis, you all, Minneapolis, excuse me, downtown Cedar Rapids. You've probably met or heard of Dennis George with Alliance Energy. I was working hand in hand with Dennis when he was with the Economic Development. I'm calling it the wrong name for the city of Cedar Rapids, but I'm trying to lay the groundwork that I'm from here, and it matters. And if there's an issue, we can address as Leighton Whites. If you have a hometown guy who will be here to address the situation. My parents are from here, this is home. So how we interact with the community matters to me. So, thank you.
Also, any more questions?
I did have a question. So did our attorney look at this agreement? Not at all, not at the the updated one that we just, what are you looking at, Mary Ann, I'm sorry. This one, did you forget this one? Had a phone conversation regarding, yes, there's a letter in there from the attorney about how Did he actually read this letter, though, this one? I was, so I just want to make sure, I didn't have an issue with the developer agreement that's in, that it addressed all of our issues. I just was, the, the language on this letter, I was, I just wanted to make sure that it doesn't.
Dustin wrote her, okay, do you want to ask Dustin a question just a second?
So Dustin, you signed this, and so basically it's just saying that you're going to sign the developers' agreement. But then it says that Leighton will be signing as the developer and will be responsible for the requirements of the development agreement. Even though we have language in the development agreement that says alike, or you guys would be responsible or held responsible. I just don't want to get into something where, okay, we signed this agreement, but this agreement, which agreement supersedes the other agreement? And you signed this knowing that this agreement says that they're not liable. I know it sounds silly, but I just want to make sure we're not signing something and then find out after the fact that, oh, that's just kidding.
Appreciate that, also, Mary Ann. Again, Dustin, current Island Land and Building Company, 201st Street, South of Cedar Rapids. Just a quick history on I-Lab and our involvement with this process. I believe it was late February-ish. We had a conversation with QTS and their team about needing some space for a laid out site. As partners in the project that they have to the east, they said, hey, we have a property here as a landowner. If you, even Leighton, QTS, to work something out, the city of Fairfax, we're happy to be a part of that process and consent to it as a land. We're a utility company and a landowner, a landholder, we're not necessarily, even though we have been intertwined with some development agreement stuff in the city of Fairfax, obviously, with the land that we own. We made it very clear with the folks here that, you know, we want this, we would like to see this happen if it benefits all parties, that officially City of Fairfax, late QTS. We were really essentially out of the conversation, which was by design because we wanted the details and the financial considerations and all the responsibilities to be that of Leighton, QTS, out of I-Lab. We understand the property owner then carries with it some obvious weight when it comes to being the landlord, but that's where we got to until two, two and a half weeks ago. Emily and I were on the call with the Leighton and QTS team and then also with the previous city manager of Fairfax. And our name was brought into the conversation as maybe being a party to a development agreement, which, you know, we said, hey, if it's landlord sent to it, I think we can do that. And then I unfortunately missed the city council meeting on the 13th, I believe it was, I was out of town. And I, I believe that's where the dialogue came amongst people in this room, that the responsible party for these improvements for this laid out site will be Iowa Land and Building Company. And just to be frank, that doesn't work, that doesn't work for us. We have been clear with that, that I'll be supportive of our customer, and we're here to do that with the city. But, you know, about a week ago, that's why we had correspondence, and I did write that brief letter with Leighton and with QTS basically saying, hey, we'll be part of this development agreement. But as far as the responsibilities, the financial considerations, everything that's laid out in this draft that was sent over on Friday. Needs to be the responsible entity, needs to be QTS, and they understand that. This is not doo-doo's at all. But as far as the actual agreement that you have in place, that unfortunately doesn't work for the relationship that we have over here. So, you know, I did receive that letter from the attorney stating that, that there should be a three-party agreement, which we agree with. But I do, we scamble forward with this particular agreement. I think what Leighton, QTS, and I-Lab means is, okay, specifically related to responsibilities that there is that except both of Leighton, QTS, Whites. Okay, yes, no, maybe a complete, as far as the ultimate ownership of that, again, I-Lab and Building Company can be a party to the development agreement as consenting property owner. But right now, as it's written, the team goes directly to us, so that doesn't work. If there's a way to include, obviously, Leighton, QTS, Whites as a signatory to the development agreement, which they're happy to do, I mean, they, they, they wouldn't be here if they weren't willing to do that. But as far as ultimate joint responsibility, again, I-Lab should be a consenting, we're requested to be consenting property owner. And the responsibilities be that of Leighton and QTS. I'm not sure if that's been communicated to the city, to the pure legal counsel, because it kind of came in late game. And I'm not sure, I think, to Mary Ann's question, if your counsel has seen, you know, my letter as, or our letter as property, or whether or not that arrangements would be acceptable. We're hoping, again, I'm speaking for the team here, that we can later say, okay, maybe one more last check out the box with the city attorney that says this is how it could work, and then we can move forward. But as it's written, it unfortunately doesn't work.
When you say as it's written, the version that's in their packet tonight?
I think that's what it's saying.
Yeah.
Which only shows Iowa land.
Correct.
So are you saying if Leighton was added to that, it would be acceptable?
I guess I'm confused why we're having this discussion. If that agreement doesn't work for anyone, why we're not why we haven't gotten to a different agreement?
What we're saying is we would like that, Leighton, as another party. A lot of the responsibilities that are currently being, they're, they're held over here, will fall to the developer. Yes, we would take responsibility for those. And that, that's what, if they're trying to say, I, I will lay the building, wouldn't be responsible for those, we would.
And I want to make sure that, I think everybody's clear, but just to bring it up again, it's last meeting, we discussed Chris Phillips, our building department head, is not going to be here tonight. But the reason for this is, is QTS being here for 33 months, whatever it is, and then they're gone. We have had past history with we developed an agreement with the ownership of the property. And that's why it came in, because there is teeth in that, and Mary Ann brought that up a couple, up a couple of weeks ago. That's where it falls on the ownership to make sure that Leighton does what they're supposed to. You give a very clear picture of your business and why you're so successful, and I appreciate that. That helps me in understanding, but for a small town, 2,800 people having this to come in, you know, we're trying to dot our i's across our t's to, to make sure that the negative things don't happen, right? And also, as I brought up last meeting, potentially, we're putting off, but, street development on our own. The benefit for Fairfax, we're going to work together, partner together with you guys, right? But this is in benefit of QTS, and in the end, QTS is leaving 33 months down the road, wherever that may be. Now, I understand that, so we're putting things on.
Good point. We're not being, we're going to be here operating data centers perpetually.
Yeah, and I'm talking, I'm talking Fairfax is what I'm talking about, in our area.
So, can we talk a little bit about what the surety bond portion of that agreement means? That would, that guarantees, I think the request was for $2.5 million surety bond being posted. Leighton would be the providing party for that surety bond. That guarantees that, let's say something catastrophic happened, heaven forbid, if Leighton is no longer here, our surety company backs that up, and they guarantee the return of the property as requested in the development agreement.
That's what I was looking for.
That's what, that's what that surety bond made, for the requested $2.5 million. Leighton would post that. We would be the executing party of the work. We would be making sure it's managed, taken care of appropriately. The date of March 1st of 2028 is fine for that West Village. The date of March first of twenty twenty-eight is fine for that West Village. That gives us adequate time to return it back to its intended usage. We, we don't see any issues with both sides.
And I understand Iowa Land also has a incentive to make sure it gets back in previous because we all want to sell. That property business. So I understand that side of it also. Uh, and, 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 and we, we get that as well. So. Trying to dot our i's across our t's to make sure that this fits well for Fairfax as well as all the other parties involved.
It's not, it's just, just ahead, sorry, here, um, man.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I could agree, yeah, yeah, the other Friday, I haven't been involved in the. The, the negotiations and discussions. I, again, I think to the point here, if this agreement could be modified where Leighton. Whites, QTS, that entity swap out that name with the owner in this agreement. We don't have a problem. I think, and, and no one here has a problem. That's, that's what we want. And that's what we all need. Uh, just for clarity, you know, there is one just for details, you know, section twelve of the development agreement. That talks about seventy-sixth Avenue will be delayed and some additional cost. And it relates to an existing preliminary plan that we have in city Fairfax from. November twenty twenty-four, where we do, as a company, take on some financial responsibilities. And that section, you know, twelve of. How many we have, we're fine with that because we have something to tie back to, which is an existing approved preliminary plan. So that might be a consideration. Consideration, we're fine as a property owner. The rest, we would like to maintain as a consenting property or to let these guys think of what they do best, which is create this opportunity. So. That's kind of where things are at. I don't, I don't want to pick up the, the, the process here. Any more than it already has been, but again, we're, as a property owner, we, we just kind of came into this a little bit. Late game, we want to make sure that we're protected as well, along the city Fairfax, but we, we appreciate this team and we have the relationship with them and we. You know, we have no reason to doubt that they're not going to do what they're, what they've said they're going to do with what they've agreed to, like this with some. Later modifications.
Council, any additional questions?
Just under number twelve, Shane, does this match the numbers that? As you can best predict, as far as a delay.
So number twelve would be Iowa Land and Building's participation, which is just inflated for the delay cost. Number thirteen would be the. More of the delay costs and, um, yeah, that's based on, you know, inflation costs and other. Delay cost. Now, there could be additional ones. You know, for example, if, if Iowa Land and Building sells a lot, you know, or just to the west there and they start developing. So you can't put a temporary drive while that project's in construction. So we may not have to, it's being granted this year. It's, there's unforesees. So there's risk, you know, the city's looking at it like, we want to come to an agreement, this is the model. And it may be a little bit more in money than what the city would, you know, ultimately see, but it could also be a bit less. What, the way the city's looking at that, we're dating the city staff. Mayor Peter was, you know, this is what we see as a reasonable cost for those delays, that five hundred thousand. That's what the city would like to see. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's going to be. Situations that are unpredictable, but just saying. The best ability to say things went as planned. That number looks good.
Might the council member that's not here tonight send me, um, I'll read a few things that he had said. Um, uh, about this, just so he has his voice in it. He's not, it'll be here. Per joins email, our attorney is com, if, if our attorney is, is comfortable with Iowa Landing, QTS is co-signers. And he's okay with that. Um. He knows we traditionally sign agreements with just a landowner, but I don't pay with more than one party for a temporary sign. Um, his suggestion was Shane yet said five percent. His suggestion is, um, the total cost minus the amount. Whatever. There should be a hard cap or fixed dollar amount for the additional construction cost of seventy-six. He's referring to the five percent. Whatever that cost is, that's what. That's what Fairfax would charge to get more realistic. So if it's four percent, that's a. It's an honest number. If it's six, then that's an honest number. He also suggests. Taking off whatever the tax value would be, savings and taking that off, off also. So for that, whatever that's. The laydown area is taking that off. All the time gets more complicated with numbers and that adds in a whole nother level of discussion, but. Those are in a nutshell what Mike's words were as far as the QTS comfortable with the attorneys having it on there. With, with both names.
So council, is it fair to summarize that the development agreement in its current form? Is not in position for you to, to vote on tonight? Requires some modifications. Shane, I believe, has still some outstanding items as far as the. Side itself and hasn't been doing any work on it until he knows where the council wants to move forward. Yes or no? Is that what I'm hearing or tell me differently? And would you be prepared if we had the attorney? Take this agreement, which was created by Shane and incorporate some of the revisions, such as the dual signatories. Had available for your, uh, June tenth meeting?
Well, I think we need to know what the director's looking for. Do we need to take the Iowa landed, have them be a signatory? And then, but take them out and put Leighton in everywhere else in the, in the agreement? And then who is going to, are they going to provide the bond?
Surety bond.
The surety bond. I think that is obviously you have the surety bond. That is a big thing for me.
You, you guys realize that if you make the owner not responsible, you're not following your attorney advice that I have on screen. He said, yes, it's okay to have both signatories, but read the email. It says the agreement should require that the owner and contract developer and jointly in several. However you say that word, obligated to the city concerning all aspects of the property. Any monetary by the city should be imposed on both the owner and the contract developer. I'm just reading your attorney's.
Well, if that's the case, then we can't do it. Period.
Could you guys sign this code? Iowa Land as code?
Yes, right now, unfortunately not. And I hate to be a fair or bad news to the team here, but again, as landlord. We just kind of were brought into the discussions a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I think we're being very clear as far as who can do what. And when, how it's done, but I don't think the attorney has. I mean, obviously, if he or she is here tonight, you hear it a little bit further. Um, in detail, but right now, there's all but one item, section twelve, that says we have responsibility to, it's more than just a bond. It's, it's. Every other item in there as an owner. And. Again, there's trust, there's no issues there, but I think we need some teeth that says. Leighton, Voice, or White and QTS are, they're, they're responsible. And there's one thing in there that I led, tied to, that's number twelve. So if there's an opportunity for council to, assuming that the Leighton, QTS team is okay with all the rest of the terms. To provide direction to amend the development agreement accordingly. Then we would like that. I think they would like to see that. We would like to see that. So we don't hold up the process. But again, for us to just say. Joint signature, we can't, we can't agree to that, unfortunately.
Yeah, but we. Yeah, and I totally understand your counsel is going to say, we want everybody we can get to sign and refuse all. I totally get that. I, I understand. We've got a great partner who said, it doesn't help if it's a bit, a little huge of land. It just doesn't, right? They're the big, great partner. If they want to take on more risks, so your counsel, I totally understand. So I'd like to put risk on everybody I can put it on. They're not going to be aligned and just, I mean, I would, right? I mean, you, you, why would you do it? It's really trying to benefit us as a developer and frankly, you guys at the city, to your people who are going to work here. And then again, I'll just go back where we started. It's the safest place for us to put people. And we were kind of at the impasse of trying to find the best place. We need to put people safely now to go work. We're saying, we're going to take every financial risk, we're going to bond it. If you need more than that, tell us. If you want a three million dollar bond, do that. You have no financial risk. We're extraordinarily well, uh, capitalized, we're, we're solvent, we're not going anywhere. We're going to build a first-class, uh. Facility. We're super clean, but we're super today. It'll be. Some of the best thing you've ever done. So want to make sure we tap your, your risk and your concern. So financially, we're going to take care of it. We're going to have two entities that are going to sign them, of. Leighton is a multi-billion dollar organization. I think they'll be solvent to cover the concerns that you guys have and we are too. So nothing here, the financial risks are going to care, cover all the potential hazards that are going to occur. And we're going to improve things around it. And I believe we're going to cover your, uh, you know, performance, uh, costs and probably help you in that regard too. But I will say, really it's the direction, because we actually put these people somewhere safely now. So. We don't know where we're going. We're going to go a different direction. And I just, we have things we have to go do, but put people somewhere down. So I, I'd love to at least maybe get. Maybe tacit understanding says, if we can replace them as a primary and we have others. Think the suggestion that we're making it sound is fair. It sounded like we're covering all the costs. But again, uh, if there was an ask from us, uh, we just need to put people somewhere safely sooner than later. So. I just want to make sure we've answered your questions and, and I, I, I understand the legal comment. I, I totally get it, but I just know. Somebody not getting any real benefit, they're not going to take on risk that they can control.
Okay, so it's really hard to have this discussion without our bonding. This is our bonding attorney that made this recommendation. No, no, no. No, it's our regular attorney?
No, it's our annexations, development attorney, Dan Mann.
Anyway, so my suggestion would be to draw it up. And have everybody sign it that we agreed to have sign it. Um, go ahead and change the language. So the contractor is liable for everything and they're having the performance and payment bond. I would add a clause saying that if we do have to litigate this, that they pay all legal expenses because we do have to chase that. I don't pay for it. Um, make some of those changes and then have them review it and see if it's. If it's agreeable or not, have our, have our attorney. Review it, see if it's, if it's acceptable, as long as the bond and everything is in there.
Shane's making, not Shane is the owner of the original on this agreement.
What do you think, Shane?
Uh, that's the legal question. I can, right, I can change it like you said, yeah. And that, and.
And everybody.
Everybody can do it. I did make those changes, yeah.
Distributed to all with those changes. The earliest that. We could. Potentially approve would be our June tenth meeting. Be what, two weeks from tonight? I would, because we're going to have to have time. Change and have legal review. How do you look at it?
Are you guys okay with that? What do you, what are your thoughts? As long as it's bonded and we're, and we're, and we're covered that direction, I'm not.
And if the attorney's looking at it, or they've seen a lot of this stuff before, so they're.
The worst thing that happens is we get to the end of this road and they don't, they don't clean up the mess. Then we go after the bond and then somebody else cleans up the mess. But I don't want to have to pay for that if that.
But if the attorney appears saying, have Iowa land that as.
They'll sign, they just necessarily won't be listed in all the. Details. It would be like if you were hiring, uh, someone to build a house for you. You know, you don't sign all the agreements with everybody, you know, your, your builder does. Same concept. Right? I mean, that's the best we can do is make that, make those changes and have him review it and see if it's. If we can live with that or not, I guess.
Sounds good. Um, is there any way to get an early read from your legal counsel? Like, we know. They don't want to do that. Be the sooner times are the essence for us. So I'm just trying, if, if they immediately don't. Think that's a good solution, we just do not wait.
Or rather than wait to the meeting.
That would probably be a phone call.
That would be fair, and I could get that phone.
If, I mean.
Yeah, I agree.
If we could, you know, again, we're, we're just trying to make sure everybody is whole plus, right? I think we're not. And if, if there's some particular attributes that I'm really concerned about X, Y, Z, I think we could probably find the same. Yes, but what those were, um, and again, I think what you'll find is everything we do. If the property owner is going to make this, convert it back to whatever their status would be, and they'll probably leave it the way it was. I mean, it's going to be nice. That's like, that's the worst thing. It could actually really be. In a nice position, but they'll be whatever this group wants us to do. Uh, we, we have been doing developments for. Quarter century of things and. Again, I would just say you could, you could review anything that we do across the country of extraordinarily high. Community impact in a positive way, uh. We, we are, uh, improvers of places. We're not detractors, uh, where we develop. And that's for people, facilities, uh. Charities, fire police, uh, when you walk into a lobby of our facility. There's a largest American flag on planet and it says dedicated to fire, rescue, police. Communities, faith, family, and God. And that's who we are. So we are improved. So, so the last thing we want to leave behind is leaving there is.
Last question, I'll, sorry about that.
Do you need like legal names, tax ID numbers, addresses?
Yeah, that.
All of that.
For, for whoever would be signing, Iowa Land and Building, Leighton, QTS, whoever would be signing, all that information will be in your book.
You can, send that to the mayor.
Yeah, send, send me that information.
Have our attorneys change up the, the agreement, but take that off your plate or no? We, we, we're happy to have our attorney do that work. Take this agreement and put in all legal entities, change all the, lose responsibility wise, and that you're not paying for that.
What's Shane saying?
That, that's up to you. I mean, and typically, you probably want to keep it in your.
Yeah, I think.
We'll, we'll, we'll put it with red lines so you can see what the changes are. We're not going to, we're not trying to sneak into it.
I think if you just get us all the legal corporate stuff that we need, we can do it.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to give us a red line version of where the changes need to occur, that might be helpful, but you don't need to go to your attorney to do that.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're going to, we'll, we'll do that. We'll take that stuff. We'll.
Send it all to me and I'll.
Get the red lines done so that you can see what changes were suggested and then their legal counsel can, yeah.
What, what do you think? Timeline would be for that, yeah. Days, yeah. I mean, we can get you all the legal entities stuff tomorrow.
Yeah, I was just going to count from what I'm seeing in here, agreement, you, you swap owner with. Developers. We're almost there. So I, I think it's a real quick turnaround.
The council entities.
I'm just looking to Shane to. He can give me any thoughts at all on.
I think to what Shane said, let's keep it in our.
Right, no, I agree. We have to go through our attorney.
Really quick. We understand your timeline, right? You want to get this wrapped up quick, if this can work, it would, we get it. It'll get expedited as. Quick as possible.
And I can't speak for our attorneys, so I, the review time.
Yeah. Last question I'll ask, and this isn't for Iowa Land, is this for QTS? At our last meeting. We talked about, this is unusual. Asking, right? Usual, everyone's probably a little different, but. The benefit here is for QTS to have a laydown area, right? QTS has agreed to have five percent to increase our costs. But that's it. I mentioned something about incentives and I, I'm not sure who had, was out the podium at that time. We're putting up a four million dollar, four point two, something like that. To finish that road off. Is there any incentives on QTS side that could help defray some costs for Fairfax? I'm not sure if that was discussed at all since our.
I think the agreement defrays the cost. So we're agreeing to cover the change in.
Right.
In what you were going to pay versus what you're going to pay two years from now.
Right.
So if there's a specific request that you're asking, we would consider it, but I. We would consider it, but I think that you're asking us to. Tell you what, like, you're asking me to negotiate against myself a little, so I think I kinda need a, a direction of what is it you want? Um, I'm not saying it's a no or a yes, I think it's just a matter of, um, what is it? I will say this, and we said this when we announced our project here. Intended to be members of the community, I think we showed that when we donated to the volunteer fire department here. We expect that we're gonna come and when we're operational, that we'll have opportunities for the city to, uh. Train, if they need to, fire department in the, uh, facility, so that they are prepared. So that we're not gonna let you come in, if there's an emergency, the first time your first responders are coming is. In an emergency, they're gonna make sure that, you know, they know what's going on. But, um, if there are needs that the city has that can help us and help you as well, we're happy to consider those, but. Little bit of, um, give me a little bit more direction and we can consider.
Yeah, I mean, just tell us what you're, what you're thinking, I mean, if there's something, you're like, I don't, whatever, I mean, we see, talk about it, I think. Other things we've done in other communities, we, you know, we. We built houses for, you know, habitat for manatees and areas, we built church stuff, I mean, we, we do. Our own personal down, our, our own personal money, but if there's a specific capital project that you're. Thinking we're impacting, or we think we can improve, listen. Right, but again, trying to understand, uh. I guess the second longer than we thought it would take, the. I don't usually have quite as many challenges to put in a temporary parking lot, so like, while I'm here, see what, what we can do. Uh, to spend, uh, and improve, so. We're just trying to get that question answered.
Okay.
So, when is our plan here? So we're going to redraft the agreement and have Dean Manning review it. Is that where it goes?
Yes, and. Um. If he says no, immediately we'll let you know that, if not, we'll continue on, and, um. The final deadline of the June tenth meeting, but we would be in touch with you sooner than that, if it looks like some results, not who.
Right.
And we need information from you as far as how the entity should be represented. All that should go to me. Any questions about that, council, are you satisfied with that? Do we need a motion on that, something at all? It doesn't provide any guidance here.
Yeah, we did have a motion, though, but. Uh, we're gonna bring it back on June tenth for, uh, that would be really helpful for us to have some certainty.
I mean, based on what you.
We're gonna put it on the agenda, so, yeah.
You just made a motion, so I'm a favor. Thank you. Okay. Anything else, we're gonna move on. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number six on the agenda. Better resolution to, uh, do an application agreement for use of highway right of way for utility accommodations with IDOT. Thing, looks like he has some information on this.
Just, this is similar to the, uh, meeting two weeks ago. Where, uh. Was it Minn, Minn, Energy?
Yeah.
And there's a question to add for the, uh, utility relocates for the intersection right there.
Any questions for Shane on that? Right of way accommodation. Hearing none, consider a motion to adopt that resolution.
Second.
Roll call please, Marion, hang. Thank you, number seven. An easy one, hopefully, consider a resolution setting the date for sale of our general obligation private persons bonds. That date would be June tenth, correct Cynthia?
Yes, I believe that. Yeah, they'll have the sale, and then you'll review the sales results, and then funding will be later.
The June seventh will be the, the bond sale?
Yeah.
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, nine.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Um, and let me just mention too, just one more thing, hang on. Um, this is also to approve the preliminary official statement. I, uh. I didn't get in the packet, I will mail that out to you tomorrow, you know, uh, look through it, if you. I looked through it, Spirit Financial has wrote it, I, I. Chris gave some data, um, I don't see anything wrong with it, but just, you can give that a look.
Just say it's what the bonds are being used for.
It, it more describes Fairfax, so it's like a information booklet about Fairfax. For the people thinking about investing and buying the bonds. Okay, so it talks about where we're located, how many parks we have, how many building permits did we do last year, how many have we done in dorm five? Um, gives some of our records from our last audit, that kind of thing. Um, so most of it doesn't change, and, um, we tweak, you know, like, number of employees or, you know.
That's different than what the past bonds have been, a booklet type thing, information.
There's all, we've done the, uh, official, what's it called, official statement. For several bonds now, and it's really the same thing, we only kinda tweak the data, you know, it's. The financial stuff's coming from the most recent audit, building permit stuff is coming from Chris, and that kind of thing.
Looks like a profile of Fairfax for the potential bidders.
Yeah. And something that we haven't done before, that's fun, I should mention that too, I had a conference call today, um. We're actually gonna get a ranking from Moody's, you know, they do like A. A triple A, that kind of thing. Um, and so, uh, Maggie and I were on the phone with them for an hour today, and then I sent some more information after the call. And they will have a committee meeting, and then we have another phone call before our next meeting, so we will know. What the rating is before the bond sale, so that the, again, the bond buyers know if. You know, we're an A, he, uh, this Eric that we talked to today, he said, cities of our size. That are on a cash basis are usually A. Plus or A plus plus, um, so he anticips, and that's what Maggie had said she anticipates also, and.
Not like double A or triple A?
No, those are higher.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, he said, when you're on a cash basis and not a accrual, you get two notches down just automatically. But that's what the state of Iowa requires us to be on, so, I mean, we could pay extra. I got our audit bill today for twenty one thousand, if you wanted to double that, you could, you know, ask the auditors to convert that all to accrual, but. You know. Most cities do not, some really big cities do, but.
What points savings you're making?
Right, yeah.
So this book is a sound on for people to bid and maybe get a cheaper bid, and what we would.
Or at least get more bidders, you know, and the more bidder.
Get a cheaper, cheaper, that makes sense to me.
Okay. Moving on to item number eight, review of the bids that we received for the West Cemetery Road realignment and reconstruction project. John has those bids, and they impacted.
All right, we got good numbers. Uh, four bids, Boomerang, Chip Frye, Conley, and Pierce Hillen. Uh, Boomerang was a little bit, Chip Frye came in a very close second place. Um. Everyone was underneath our, our estimate. Um. And, uh, any questions? About bid response?
Any questions, council? So you're recommending John?
Recommend or the low bidder, Boomerang.
Moving on to number nine, which is a resolution. To award that bid.
Just 'cause I don't remember, the second name looks familiar. They did, uh, water main, the railroad tracks last year.
They're from the U K, very.
Is. They do a. Good job, or? Yeah, they did, like, for, for something that we know history on, is that worth an extra little bit? Knowing that they.
You wanna go with the, the second highest bid?
I, I'm just, I'm just asking a question. It's not, and I will not ask that question.
I mean, you can ask a question, but I don't think you can go to, if, if you have a competent low bid, you need to go with them.
Unless you have documented reason to not use the low bidder, which I don't believe you do. Yeah.
All of these kind of triggers are, Rick. Yeah, yeah.
So need to, a motion to adopt the resolutions to award the bid to Boomerang?
Second.
Roll call.
I have to abstain.
Yes, you have an, as attention here.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Okay. The next. Series of purchase agreements. Are all related to the West Cemetery Road. Intersection realignment project, Shane, are you gonna say anything about these, or?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just, there's any questions, these are for the, uh. Property acquisitions, easement right of way acquisitions for, uh, direct, um. Wiscops and Hilton, so these are tenants on the property.
Yeah, these are just for the tenants.
Yeah, it's just for the tenants, and it's fifty dollars per each one. Um, so they're all, you know, the next, what, six fine items for individuals, breach tenant. With a fifty dollar payment from the city to the tenants of those three properties.
And there's seven of them here, and then I found out today there's another one that we missed, so it'll be on your June tenth. Me.
And it's being communicated to the one that we missed, that we missed. So that they don't wonder why their neighbors all got the fifty dollar check, and they didn't, so. We're communicating that fact, but we have to approve them individually. So, number ten is for the purchase agreement with advanced traffic. As a tenant.
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, Tom.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Number eleven. Same resolution, but with Lori O'Gardis. Need a motion?
Motion.
You second please?
Second.
Roll call please, Marion.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Number twelve, resolution got through purchase agreement with Jerry Henderson, need a motion?
Second.
Roll call please, Marion.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Number thirteen, purchase agreement with Christopher King.
Motion. Sorry.
Roll call, Tom.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Thank you, number fourteen, purchase agreement with Stinger Trailer Rehear. Need a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, Marion.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Number fifteen, purchase agreement with Big Rigger Builders, please.
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, Tom.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Number sixteen, um, final tenant until we pick up the missing one, purchase agreement with Paul Norway, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, Marion.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number seventeen, discussion of possible motion concerning the purchase agreement for the bank parking lot. Um. Consulting with our attorney on the, the purchase agreement with the bank for the, the parking lot, potential parking lot. Um. The attorney indicated a preference while in discussion with us. Um, the current purchase agreement does not include anything on environmental considerations as to whether we want to do an environmental review. But a lot, Cynthia, help me with how that was described.
A phase one environmental, where they just, uh, they don't actually do any. Um, soil sampling, they do ownership, use of the property, history search. And come up with a probable that they're comfortable with it or not. If they're not, then they would recommend a phase two, which would be on sites stuff, but he didn't really go into that. And he said that they almost always recommend to do the phase one in a. Uh, community downtown district, you know. The, um, he says if it was virgin farm ground, they wouldn't be recommending it, but.
And what does this do exactly?
It looks for any potential environmental things that would be on that property.
Like asbestos and stuff like that. It's a desktop survey and it's big, like buried tanks, there's no gas station there, that is kind of.
It's not to protect both parties, so what does that cost? And does the attorney do that, or? What is the cost put out, and who does it?
It's probably in the range of fifteen hundred, two thousand.
Yeah, I was thinking he said two thousand or less, and I don't remember if he said their firm does it, or they. If we have to contact somebody to do it, I kind of think that we have to contact somebody to do it, but I'm not sure, that's, yeah.
I was looking for soil sample, man.
Uh, that, that building that's there has been there forever, that's why I'm asking, other than asbestos, I can't imagine anything that would be an issue.
Like an oil tank, fuel, tank.
I mean, that apartment's been there since when?
There was a meat market on the floor, I think somebody said.
Yeah, I mean, that building's been there a long time.
Yeah, it's up to you.
For the attorney is.
Attorneys.
Suggesting it?
Yes.
Suggesting.
Yeah, but I'm sure it is.
That's why I'm asking, if it's some of the service he provides, I'm sure he is asking, but.
And that I don't recall, I don't know if they said.
I don't believe that they.
Probably not, but then.
Typically, no, they would, they may work with a group of firms that do, that they recommend, they would tell the city to go buy something.
That'd be like if you're buying a house, you would do that.
The status of the agreement is the bank has signed the current, the purchase agreement in its current form, but if you. Want this added, that we would need. To set that aside.
They would pay for it.
Well, no, we've set. Aside the current, signed by one party agreement, and start over again, and whether you want. Our attorney to only start over with the agreement is up to you. He indicated he did not draft the purchase agreement that the bank created. Um, so that's another decision you need to make, it's number one, do you want the environmental study, number two, if so. The purchase agreement has to be amended, do you want the attorney to redo the entire agreement?
Well, you mentioned asbestos, that's.
We're gonna put a parking lot on it, so it's not like.
And he did say that that would be considered in their review, he asked us how we would be using it. Cause he said, even if the desktop sought to bring up something that might be a concern, he said they've had clients before. That they weren't gonna put a house on it, they were, you know, oh, I know, the example, he, cause he's also mayor of Marion, you know. Where Marion Iron used to be, you know, that was a concerned property for sure. And because of the, the city of Marion is putting around about the street there, then they, the. Uh, environmental review people were more lenient, knowing that that was the, the end use, right? He gave that example.
But the other thing is, if we purchased the lot and then something changed, and we decided not to move forward with. The library expansion, and somebody else wanted to buy it from the city, they would probably be expecting the environmental review. And the library board is not agreed, has not voted on the purchase of the lot either.
The bank bought it and did none of the above.
Correct.
Yeah.
So what do you want to do, council?
Why would the. Sorry, I'm, that's, why would the agreement have to be revised if we haven't signed it? Let's say we did the environmental sample, and it came back negative, we didn't sign it, so.
It's just if you're comfortable with an agreement that the attorney did not draft, and didn't.
Oh, that was that comment, so who drafted it?
Probably the administrator, but. I think they.
I don't, I'm not. I don't think we're gonna get jacked around by the bank. Either of all people that. You know, we go binding agreement with, they don't think that's the one we have to be concerned about. You, I don't. Spend another couple thousand dollars.
You say that, oh, we are.
Well.
So are you a proposer?
Phase one's just a history review?
Yes.
Private usage.
Yep.
I went to another bit.
That was also.
But it had not been reviewed by the attorney.
The agreement was reviewed by the attorney.
The agreement was? The current agreement.
It wasn't written by the.
Wasn't written, but it was reviewed.
Oh, so there's one, but. Not by that one.
Well. Here's an example, they advised the phase one be incorporated into it. It was not their decision to leave that out.
So now counsel, it's your decision.
I gotta stick with them, what the attorney says and lean on, lean on them. It it's it's two thousand, but.
This library name?
Have had added in.
Do you want? The environment, anything added to the agreement to reflect that we're doing that? Or do you just want it done?
I think the agreement has to have it, if we haven't signed anything, and it's just, it's done.
Just do it.
We don't like it, then we just don't.
Don't sign. So I need a motion telling us exactly what to do. Are you saying move forward with the environmental phase one? Don't change the agreement. Till we know the results.
If our attorney is fine with the agreement, even though it's missing that piece, if they're fine with. The remainder, yes.
And can I add, do you want to um? Just do the phase one environmental study, don't change the agreement if. Our attorney is okay with the rest of it. And the library board takes action to approve, that was gonna be my purchase, which is next Monday, right?
Well, yeah, I guess that's assumed, um, if the board, library board hasn't said yes to it, then. There's no reason to develop into an agreement with the library, because. That's the whole reason for this. I mean.
I mean, make sense, am I, I don't. Yeah, you know, or.
So you're gonna hold up on the phase one until after the library board meeting and then after the library, then you're gonna.
And they meet Monday, it's it's Monday.
They meet Monday, so it's not like it's thirty days from now or something.
Are you interested if the library board approves, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, you can approve it, subject to that.
Subject to that.
Yes.
But then hold off on the purchase agreement being signed until the bill sort of comes back. Current things, library. The sample, the study, and then the agreement in that order then, right, is that?
I think that's what Tom's moving.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Nay. Damn that.
I'm gonna my computer, you started it up.
Can I ask, Marion, what's your thought? I'm just. We're gonna put a parking lot there, it's, and they're, that site's been like that for.
I know, okay, that's. Fifty years and I'm just, I agree. I know it's only a thousand or two thousand dollars, but.
It's. I I just don't think we need to spend money, but that's me. And I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Number I eighteen. Special impossible motion concerning the city administrator's position. Um, two things for your consideration, counsel. One is how do you wanna move forward with the recruitment process? And two, um, how do you wanna handle? The the current. Uh, responsibilities. So let's start, anybody have any comments on the city administrator job description?
This is, this is what Dustin was hired into, correct?
Right, that's the current job description that we have in front. Just um, give you some staff input, um, I believe that we still think the uh responsibilities, the duty listing. Is accurate, is what we want from a city administrator. As mentioned last meeting, we've discussed maybe having the um. College education will be preferred, preferred but not required. And uh. Sorry, because the computer is playing crazy, I don't have it in front of me, what's that? The wording on the next one.
The wording says bachelor's degree in public administration, a closely related field is required. What we talked about, it's changing the word required to preferred.
Yeah, and the the very next.
And then it said the master's degree is preferred.
Okay. Yeah. And then uh, whether you want to still require they live in town, that was another question raised. See, I think I might mention that.
It says preferred, the current job description says living in Fairfax is preferred, so that.
Oh, okay, doesn't say required, okay.
That's what's saying.
Okay, I was thinking they had to within six months.
Think that was with our specific contract with Dustin.
Oh, okay.
But the job description just says preferred.
Okay.
So are you okay on the education change and required to prefer?
Sorry, um, I was gonna say something about the. Location, should we firm it up a little bit in case there is an applicant from another state? Like Dustin, for instance, that if it's preferred. Do you want the managing out of?
You mean like, what is like county?
Like a certain proximity. To Fairfax.
It says within a thirty minute commute at the moment.
I guess fair enough.
Living in Fairfax preferred, but will accept living within a thirty minute, I don't know about.
Thirty mile, thirty minute.
Thirty minutes is what it says currently. And if we enter another contract, we just maybe make sure that that wording comes forward into the contract, not the.
I know, um. It was cha- Dustin was challenging to try to find housing within Fairfax, within a short period of time. So. But it says in here that that's not a requirement, it's just a preference.
I'll just step back to your education, I think that. We should require a. Degree in administration. I. I worry. That as our. Let's ignore the previous four months. I worry as our first one. We want someone with. That has the education in it. And ideally a path coming as well. Whether they were in the role or learning from someone that was in that role. You know, the last go around, I think we're getting some applicants that. That that maybe one didn't, but. That fit that criteria, you know? It also helps narrow down the requirements.
So why does staff wanting to change that requirement, does that came from staff, didn't it?
Probably just based on the experience that we have, that um, we feel like. On the job experiences, city administrators or senior staff would be much more valuable, much more. Applicable to what we're wanting, what we want done, um.
I don't remember, B, work experience covers that, however, so it's work experience, five years of experience in related fields. Management with particular emphasis on municipal government, preferred but not required.
Yeah, and we we're not suggesting to. To get rid of that, we just are suggesting that. If they had that. That a degree in public administration. Might not be also required.
I've seen some job advertisements where they're kind of a combo saying. This is what we prefer, or a combination of. Education and experience, was I think is what I'm hearing you guys say.
And that's, that's how staff was viewed then.
I was gonna say, I would be more open to to making that change, just because. I think our pool is going to be a lot bigger if we do that and we might find the right person. On that side as opposed to the other side. Other side of what? Like the education versus experience.
Well, and and if you find somebody with that college degree, I mean, you're certainly.
I just don't wanna exclude people getting so current work situation.
So we're back, are we back, you saying, changing it to preferred under education?
I would say preferred.
Here's Mike's note.
So we're not. Getting rid of someone that would be a good candidate, you know.
Mike's note, as to the city admin position, I still feel like the qualification slash requirements are by and large acceptable. I consider getting rid of the education background requirement as I value real life experience over college. I don't think the city administrator should be required to live within Fairfax, I would also consider hiring from within. Instead of doing another countrywide search. Those, Mike's, Mike's woes.
If he doesn't give a vote, he's not here, correct?
No, he doesn't give a vote, right.
And we are required as a city. To certain. Hosting requirements, we can't just hire from within.
No, we're not.
Yeah, they have to, if someone here wanted.
We certainly are welcome to anyone internally who would want to apply.
You could appoint an active, acting city administrator, that's not filling the position, that's giving somebody. The responsibilities until we find somebody. And if you chose not to do a nation, you know, use a search firm. The minimum you have to do is posting at the post office city hall in the library. You could do um. Posting in the Gazette and other port or careers, you know, you could. Do more than the minimum, but not a full thirteen thousand dollar search firm to, you know. There's degrees, you could post a.
Easy car with the league.
Yeah, with the league, yeah, yeah, um. There's a. Um, like Clarknet, it's the Iowa Municipal, um. Ice. I Iowa City Administrators Rate Fight, I think. You know, you could, we could get somebody to post on there, you know, and those go to. All the city administrators that sign up for it anyway. Um, within the state of Iowa, there's lots of other outlets that. We could do. That. Wouldn't cost thirteen thousand.
But if you're, you even read up an education requirement, you're gonna have a lot of. Potential for a lot of applications to go through and. That would be a benefit of having. So to read about, maybe not that one, but a a firm or someone. Going through all of that.
For us, and they do background checks and everything, remember the services they provide. They do all the background checks, credit checks, all of that for us.
But normally, we just have a hiring committee to go through that, isn't that what we normally would do?
And it, you know, if we wanted to add a background check and a uh, credit check, you know, you you just do that on your final ones, you don't do it on the whole staff.
Right, with some calculations.
That would be mine. I I would just like to say that. Since I've been here, the hiring has been really success, successful with the hiring committee. Um, I think the more involvement. You have locally and not turn over. The decision making, some of it to somebody else is better, but that's my opinion.
Well, we had a hiring committee this time also, people right here.
Right, but we weren't as hands on.
Right. So what do you, what do we need to decide here with all this stuff?
Well, you wanna change educational requirement to preferred rather than required, okay, so one change in the jobs.
Then what else do we need to decide?
Well, and then, so. You want to appoint an acting, well, city administrator?
So that gets to be problematic, I think, do so. Is there someone that? Would we have do that, I guess, maybe?
The attorney's opinion is in your packet, did you read that?
I did not see that.
We need to look at that. This, um, I can tell you that staff. Would like a city administrator, acting city administrator appointed and they would recommend Chris.
So so this whole process to find a fire. City administrator, this isn't. What's your thoughts? I mean, I don't have intentions of this dragging out the entire year, I have. My thoughts are sooner than later.
Sure.
Meaning.
Place ads.
Few months.
By next week.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of my thought to where we're actively. Or this process will go quicker than what Ken's consulting. Was. Um, so does that impact? An interim? Maybe. I mean. You go back to the way it was. Prior to January one, on a temporary basis.
We have no, we have no procedures for that, that was oversight on our part, we did not establish any procedures. If there was a city administrator vacancy for whatever reason. So that's why um, I had the attorney review the circumstances and their recommendation. Based off of everything they read was. That it would go back to the way it was before we had a city administrator.
Yeah, you're entertaining the thought of an interim city administrator, we have no. Policy or procedure for that either, we have no job description for that either. But they would be an active city administrator and the job description would be the city administrator's job description. They would be acting as administrator, but not hired as the administrator.
So I have a question for counsel on that, as we look through the job description, the three, four pre-stopped description. Of the city administrator. Who can step in to that role and take over every one of those responsibilities?
I think that situation makes sense. In a different city or we were a different size. So we don't have a city administrator, if we did, let's say they had junior people under them, whatever those titles are, make them a title. That to me would make sense and more than likely. If that city administrator leaves, so you're gonna hire, even though you're in post publicly, more than likely you hired. Those people, I I can see that, just like any other organization. But. For. Anyone we have here, I think they're welcome to apply. I don't think they fit the role of even putting an interim, because that's just not what their role is. And previously, it was. The mayor that was doing. Mayor.
Department heads, we're doing a lot of what's in the city administrator position. And. I would challenge that, that um. Chris doesn't have the skills to do probably everything except he doesn't know how to issue a check. Or set up the budget, which the previous city administrator did not know either. He's worked with the developers, he knows the. Building side of it, he knows the zoning part of it. He is probably the most rounded and was doing many of those tasks. Of any of the staff.
Is he wanting to do that, is that what the staff?
He is willing to do that.
So what would that look like if he assumed all these responsibilities, who does Chris's job?
He is already trained, um. Eric. Um, Eric's been going on inspections with him for quite some time, he did all of the rental inspections with him. Yeah, I think between the two of them, they wouldn't have any problems covering.
How long do we think?
Temporary, you know.
How long do we think it's gonna take to fill this position?
I don't know, I don't.
So. What about the payroll contract with Chris, will he still be able to fulfill that, or would we give, give a package salary?
The payroll contract doesn't call for Chris, it just calls for a staff person. And Eric has the, he's a master plumber. And he's, like I said. He's, Chris has already been training him as a backup and uh. I wouldn't say that Chris wouldn't go with him. Maybe the first few times, but uh. Chris has said that he has complete confidence in Eric and Eric is very willing. Chris has said that he has complete confidence in Eric and Eric is very willing to take on those duties.
So let me share counsel. Who do you wanna, I'm sorry. Who do you wanna be the lead on the current projects, be the face of the community moving forward on? All of our guests tonight, QTS late late moon project, well, number four, West Cemetery drone intersection, Union Pacific Crossing. Fire station addition, bank lot purchase. You want Chris to take over talking to Patrick? Library edition, sanitary sewer connection, Hartman Heights Pavilion and Restream, seventy sixth avenue, urban roadway, emergency planned development. So what you're saying is. You want someone, Chris, it sounds like specifically, to assume all of those things.
With the department heads.
Instead of going with the lawyer's recommendation to put it back. On the mayor's lap who was doing all of these things until January seventh, that's where that'd be my preference. To do what, have Chris, to have you do it. I know you don't want to do that.
That's my preference. What do you guys think?
I I agree. I look at a lot of those projects, Chris already knows a lot of details as far as the building side, the industrial side, that's that's his department. So a lot of that he already knows. Is there anybody here at Fairfax that knows a hundred percent of them? No, there's not. But I think if there's anybody that had thought, but but no, but no disrespect to you, Joanne. I think Chris has a lot of that experience with all of that Sullivan. Harlem Heights, the pavilion, I think you said that was on change, but. It's a, it's, it's a short term either way, A or B, right?
Um, and also the fact that if Chris was the acting one, he's here all the time, he's full time.
So you would want all city staff reporting to Chris. You would want Chris to be our media contact, I'm just reading a few things off the job description. And I I'm sorry, I'm just saying someone other than the mayor shouldn't put Chris's name in there, someone other than the mayor. Have all city staff temporarily report to them, temporarily be the media contact, temporarily. Um, talk to the the QTS Leighton people at a high level, um. Sign checks on all purchase orders, approve all purchase orders for all departments. This whole list of things.
But, Joanne, when's the last time you signed a check? I mean, let's not present it as if you do all those things.
The staff and Cynthia, you are the clerk.
Yes, I am Barb, thank you.
And your duties are to listen and take notes.
Um, my duties are what the council decides, I can give input or not, or maybe not, not. By my residence.
So Barb, hold on a second till I recognize you.
Sure.
Okay. Am I recognized? Um, let me hang on a second, I wanna see if they're done with discussion before I recognize anybody.
I guess positive discussion.
You're pausing, okay, all right. Barb, I recognize you go.
Thank you Barb Connor, one on one, one on one, wings, Bill, Mark, Fairfax. This is exactly what I was in fear of last, at the last meeting. Once Cynthia stated, you know, we really don't need to have anybody with a degree, I knew I had got feeling this is where this was going. And so here we are.
What's your objection, Barb?
My objection, my objection is it looks very. Plank. That Dustin is gone. Twenty-five thousand dollar severance package, we don't know why, citizens ought to know why for twenty-five grand. And then we have. The duties of a of of his duties now diminished, so we can get somebody in this in house. That, in my opinion, which I'm just a citizen here, I'm just saying. I hope that you don't hire anybody that's affiliated with Fairfax City Hall or has ever worked here. It should be somebody from outside, this independent thinking. Who uh is non-biased and knows how to run a city. That is not Chris Philip, in my opinion. It's all up to you guys or anybody in this cer- in this circle here. We need to get somebody in with fresh eyes that's gonna do their job, non-biased. And get the job in and look out for our community. And I hope that you all will decide to have Joanne stay in on this because people are watching this, this is. Pretty apparent how everything is being played out here, in my opinion and others, so that's just my two cents.
Next.
State your name. Yes.
Please state your name.
I am Cindy Anderson, resident of Fairfax, um, I. Strongly encourage the college degree. You're gonna get a better quality of person because they spent last last night to go to school and do that. I would definitely tie it to experience. I do not believe you should hire someone right out of college because they got a college degree. No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that the college degree is important in this role. You not only have someone who has to have knowledge of the building stuff, of the um. Planting and zoning, of the the way the city um is kind of laid out things. You have to have a person that can meet face to face with a billion dollar corporation. You have to have a person that the communication skills. Are not. Only about how you can build this or do that. It's important, I guess I'll use Barb's term in my opinion, that. If you wanna go forward with the city administrator person, they are the face of you. They are representing the city of Fairfax and they don't just represent the department heads or city staff. They represent people like me who live here. Who pay the taxes here, who watch what happens. When no one is taking notice. So I encourage you to think long in heart about getting rid of some of those requirements. If you're truly looking for a city administrator who's gonna do their job, not just passify.
Just, we're not talking about getting rid of college education or just prefer.
And we're not suggesting to change or diminish any of the responsibilities.
Okay, so what else do we have to decide here? We've changed that to preferred, then the option is mayor or staff or. Press or, and is there something else we have to decide?
How you wanna recruit, whether you wanna use a recruiter, professional recruiter, or whether you want to. Use other options.
I would say, I, in my opinion, I would say let's try the other options route and see what kind. Of applicants we get, if we don't find that we have the appropriate applicants, then I think we could reach out. But I don't think we have anything to lose by doing that. What is your, uh, you guys have an idea of timeframe, let's say we did the the posting that is said, that I believe. Uh, uh, great finding, um, and we had those out. By the end of next week, so like, one, June six or something like that.
What do you normally do, three days? Thirty days, I don't.
Yeah, ten days is the minimum for uh for the post, it's just too little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty days.
Thirty days and then um. Do you want to, what?
Do a hiring committee, yes.
Yeah, do you wanna establish a hiring committee now or at your June meeting or?
June meeting when we've got my character.
So it's going there, we also posted like LinkedIn and Glass Store.
I think you can do as many places as you want Cynthia, I think the more, the better. LinkedIn is a good thought. Now, that only leaves the question of intro. I I make it motion, I would just let the mayor handle it, if we're gonna proceed with this quickly, I don't think there's any reason to get people.
Eight rolls?
Yes.
I think it costs more heading.
So it can be.
And I think, yeah, I I go back to attorney, the professionals too, that's if I read that email correctly, because I read. Uh, the other one, he correctly, he recommended go back to the way it used, way it was prior, right?
Yeah.
But we do need to establish procedures for the future as to what we do on an interim basis, I think we could. Do without one of the likes here or something.
The motion is to have the mayor as acting city admin?
Yes.
Can we just go back to the way it was?
No, not just the way it was, I'm still just the mayor.
Fire to January one, we revert back to. Status of operations.
Prior before this.
Yes, yes.
I like to look long term at things also, I like qualifications. Things are really changing, data centers. I had an inquiry today, as recent as today, about another data center. Maybe knocking on our door, so we we will continue to talk to people at higher levels about these things. I just said, the only thing we've got on our plate is this possible lay down area, they wondered what we were doing. I said, all we've got in front of us is a lay down area, period, amen, I didn't give them any other comment, so.
So now I have motion by, well, you know, seconded by Wozniak to have operations revert. To as prior to establishing the city administrator. So what the clerk was doing, what department heads were doing, what the mayor was doing, all all of that will revert back. It's like he used to do.
If we have, I'll go, no, I had. All in favor?
Are you gonna do mayor's comments?
Say it. Can I, can I mention something, Adonami, that I didn't when they were here? The last thing I asked is about incentives for Fairfax, they put it back on us. I like. And if you can reach out to Mike and ask him this too, we we all email. Cynthia, Joanne on what we think an incentive would be to QTS, it's there. He didn't say no, he says we need something to consider, we can.
I think he was, he was more saying that as members of the community, they would.
Buy labor.
They would don't, they would donate to different things that we have going on. And then I think the developer is one that's going to be on hook for them.
Yeah, that's right, this has nothing to do with I U B, I would land, right, but it all goes to QTS. But you know, you're here for thirty-three months, right, and then you're gone. So there is an incentive there that I think they had, and everybody sent a an opinion. Email an opinion out on what you think that it could be, I mean, who knows?
Well, we can't have a discussion outside of the council meeting, you know.
Well, that's why I said individually, give an opinion.
What kinds of things are you thinking?
In a QTS bathroom?
A what?
Jointated bathroom restroom at one of the parks, what you said.
We have, I I continue to talk about the four million, four plus million, we have a lot of uh the road. You sent out an email earlier, earlier on the library on and what we're.
I gave you some ideas, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, you're looking for ideas, so I'm writing that up, what were those other ideas in your email?
Oh, good family donation, library edition donation, fire station edition donation, any of those kinds of things.
I think those are all things that they're saying that they were doing, way, do anyway, without having to be.
Yes, without a strong.
Library one might not be available, I'm throwing there. I'm just throwing it out there that there's something out there, they eat carrot in order to say yes for knowing how much. They're not gonna ask for a carrot, that's what I'm saying.
No, they're not gonna.
They're not gonna say, here's an idea, here's an idea, no, come to us with ideas and we'll say yes or no, we'll probably do something. I mean, I got that tonight, I got that two weeks ago, so it's it's there. Whether you're a partner or gonna be projects, that they would, I guess.
Well, they already given twenty-five thousand to the fire department, but.
Here, but but that one, I I didn't object to that, that was because they're going in there, that's not because of things.
Right, that's where the their first.
They can't double up on the the lay down answer, yes, right? But that doesn't, we have a negotiation, that's what we gotta think, they're not, they're smart. They're solvent, they're a multi-billion dollar company, they wanna work well together, so we have to ask, that's what I'm saying.
Start seven figures. That's what we're saying that they can do, let's go back into the counter.
You guys see my email that I presented, Shane, came out to what, one point two million? I laid it all out, how I came to it. Also, they can do, say no, well, how about two hundred fifty thousand? Okay, I'm just, I'm just making suggestions, that was an example, I know I'm reaching for the moon here, right? You're never gonna make a hundred, you miss a hundred percent of the shots you don't try.
Well, I think our window is pretty tight, you know, I think we don't have time for a lot of shenanigans. They're they're, they wanna get moving, so that's the next thing is. If you wanna do something, get a plan, something.
Seven figures, settle at nine hundred thousand, there you go, that's not a shenanigans, that's it. To to be fair, they did dangle that, that they have other locations, they're ready to go.
There was a reason why he said, he said. He wanted to make sure that we were aware that that might or might not be true, so if you don't know.
This is what they do.
The other location might be just on the other side of our city, and so the impact would be almost the same, except.
Right.
Restoration the site, but. Yeah, you have no idea, they go somewhere else.
You're on the hook for all the.
So are we still under mayor's comment, or would you ask the mayor?
Sorry, I jumped in here, that's why I wanna stop you, or you had your mayor's conference, thank you.
I'm to mayor's comment, I did, today was the day that our twenty-eight E um annexation exam with Cedar Rapids was on. Uh, a public hearing on the Cedar Rapids City Council agenda, so I attended, unfortunately. Their agenda is even longer than most of our agendas. And I ended up having to leave before they got to our public hearing, however, the good news is. How they do their public hearings is at the very beginning, they say, were there any written objections to any of the public hearings? And they had a long list of them, they only had one uh few comments and it wasn't on our item. So we didn't have any written objections, so I'm assuming that it passed, but I don't know for sure. I tried, but I.
Are there meetings reported?
Yes. So. So hopefully that got passed, so. That's all I have. Anything else, Cynthia?
No.
Need a motion to adjourn them.
Motion, say it.
All in favor?
Yo, my boy never scored a run, yeah.